Call today's meeting of County Council order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Optional prayer, Councilwoman Law, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. We want to thank you, Lord, for our gifts, patience in trouble, rainbows after clouds, moonlight in the dark night, wisdom to walk the right path, and peace to calm anxious worry. Help us to have thankful hearts and be gracious with our bounty and knowledge. Let us, with grateful hearts and open minds, we ask this in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Leone?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Chairman Brenneman?
Here.
Hearing of the public, those who called ahead will have five minutes, those who did not will have three. We have a Carrie Sessler who signed up to speak. Please rise to the podium, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening. I am a child welfare caseworker with the Office of Children and Youth, and I'm here to support the request regarding our parking situation. And my understanding is that the council has already decided in favor of that, is my understanding? So I will keep my comments to a minimum. Just want to say thank you. The support of that would go a long way in helping us to be more productive in our jobs. It will increase our productivity considerably because of the time that we waste looking for places to park. And it will also give us a big boost in worker satisfaction. We do have a very high turnover rate in our agency, and right now 60% of our caseworkers have under a year of experience, which is very detrimental to the children of Erie County. I'm sure you're aware. And so having this help in motivating people to continue to do a very difficult job is very much appreciated. We appreciate many things about our job, including our benefits and other things that we realize do cost the county, and we do appreciate those things. And wanted you to be aware that we come humbly before you to ask for this help to do a better, more productive job. So thank you very much for those of you who are supporting our requests. It's greatly appreciated. It will not go unnoticed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? You'll have three minutes. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, moving on. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Dr. Faust?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Horton. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the minutes, Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Reports of county officials, as there will be no report from the County Executive Finance Committee, Councilman Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance Committee met last Thursday, November 9, 2017, and we agreed to add the following items under New Business. Ordinance number 112 and ordinance number 113, which are companion ordinances from the Public Health Department. We agreed to add the possible resolution of number 54, Financial Statement Independent Auditor's Report for the COG. We agreed to add item D, Possible Adoption of Resolution number 55 for dealing with the county's community development block grant. Also, a possible adoption of Resolution number 56, which is a five-year lease dealing with our voting machines, I believe. And item F, this is an appointment, possible appointment from Mr. Leone's district, Mr. DiPaolo, to the Gaming Revenue Authority. And I believe, I don't know if we should amend it, or we agree to amend tonight's agenda to add item G for ordinance 114. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmen. As there's no other reports of county officials, I would like to say something briefly. You know, last week, we had that torrential storm that came in through our region. From that, unfortunately, a couple of our citizens lost their lives. And I want to thank our emergency response professionals in Erie County, as well as in the municipalities, that responded to help address some of these issues and, of course, help probably make something smoother that could have been worse. And through that, I think there's always lessons that we learn through those type of events. The 100-year storms, which I guess we've had like three 100-year storms this year or something like that, so not quite 100-year anymore. But through that, I was a bit surprised to see this international veterans group called Team Rubicon, they came into town at the request of our public safety professionals. And Team Rubicon was started by post-9/11 veterans who believe in serving and giving back to their community and doing so through disaster response, be it famine, flood, tornadoes, hurricanes, et cetera. And they've responded all over the globe since 2010, to include Haiti, quakes in Asia, and all throughout our country during the hurricanes and floods. And since we live in a region that thankfully we don't have many natural disasters, it was great to see that they actually came up here. Well over 25, and they're still cycling in and out, but well over 25 volunteers, most of them veterans themselves. I've met them on Saturday and again today, from six states, including two from Canada I met, very nice folks, very stereotypically Canadian nice. And they've been camped out, staying at the Saratoga, the Mill Creek Township Fire Department. And every day, they've been out cleaning up the storm. These are veterans who've served our country. They came to Erie from other places to help us out, clean up after our storm damage. And they've done so in the city of Erie and Mill Creek Township. I myself played with some chainsaws on Saturday. It was pretty fun. But if you see them, or if you have a chance, please go to the West Ridge Saratoga Fire Department, give them your thanks for being here, for helping out, and just know that if other people are willing, who don't have to, come to our community, help out, that we surely can rise to the occasion as well in our own communities. And I want to thank Councilwoman Fatika, who, as I found out today from the coordinators from Team Rubicon, that they have had more pasta than they could possibly need for days on end. And I want to appreciate the council staff that's also helped out. But they are going to be staying here. Originally, they were going to leave today, but now they're going to stay through Friday because they had so many requests from citizens for assistance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilwoman.
They did ask me if I wanted to try a chainsaw, and I decided to just bring cookies instead. So, great group of people, and they're providing a service, but they said that they have felt so welcome by everybody involved in the Erie community that are offering food and well wishes to them. So it's a great thing. They're at the West Ridge Fire Hall South Station, which is on Saratoga Road.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Moving on.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Horton.
I move to amend the agenda to move old business items A through R until after we conclude the new business. This will allow council to amend and pass all the budget ordinances after new business is concluded.
We have a motion on the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DiMatteo. Any discussion? Roll call on this first motion.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Horton.
I move to amend the agenda to add ordinance number 114 of 2017, general fund supplemental appropriation of $29,744 as a companion to ordinance number 112 of 2017.
Moved by Councilman Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
Perhaps he would amend his motion to include that as a second reading, and we can vote it on one.
Well, we can actually, Councilman, we could do all three at once.
Correct.
If that's okay.
And that was my next amendment.
Next one? Any other discussion items? Roll call on the motion.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the agenda to make second readings of ordinance numbers 112, 113, and 114.
Moved by Councilman Horton.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Fatika. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the motion, Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. If you're following along in your agenda, we are now addressing item eight, that's new business before we go to old business. And items A, B, and G are second readings. Second reading of ordinance number 112, in title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 112, 2017, 9th, 2017, Public Health Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $24,666 for change in immunization grant funding.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Leone, seconded by Councilwoman Fatika. Any discussion? Roll call.
On ordinance 112, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 113, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 113, 2017, 10th, 2017, Public Health Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $15,816 in additional tuberculosis grant funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion? Roll call.
On ordinance 113, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Possible adoption of Resolution number 54, in title only.
Resolution number 54, 2017, a resolution to approve the financial statements and independent auditor's report of the Erie Area Council of Governments for the calendar year ending December 31, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion? Roll call.
On resolution 54, Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Possible adoption of Resolution number 55, in title only.
Resolution number 55, 2017, resolution approving a revision to Erie County's fiscal year 2014 Community Development Block Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion? Roll call.
On resolution 55, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Possible adoption of Resolution 56, in title only.
Resolution number 56, 2017, approving a five-year lease agreement between Moxie Three Real Estate LLC and the County of Erie.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion? Roll call.
On resolution 56, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Move to appoint Dominic DiPaolo to an expired term on Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Leone, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the appointment, Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 114, in title only.
Second reading of ordinance number 114 of 2017, 36, 2017, General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $29,744 for transfer to public health.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Leone, seconded by Councilwoman Fatika. Any discussion? Roll call.
On ordinance 114, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Okay, that takes us back to old business, and we'll start off with second reading of ordinance number 94, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 94, 2017, 2018 Debt Service Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion? Roll call on ordinance number 94, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Second reading of ordinance number 95, in title only.
Ordinance number 95, 2017, a second reading, the 2018 Employee Fridge Benefit Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion? Roll call.
On ordinance 95, Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 96, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 96 of 2017, 2018 Health Choices Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move to amend ordinance number 96 with the following action sheet. Action Sheet 1.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Roll call on resolution number 96 as amended.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Second reading of ordinance number 97, in title only.
Second reading of ordinance number 97, 2017, 2018 Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move to amend ordinance number 97 with the following two action sheets.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call on the motion.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Roll call on ordinance number 97 as amended.
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 98, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 98, 2017, 2018 Drug and Alcohol Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Horton.
I move to amend ordinance number 99?
98.
98, excuse me, with the following cover sheet, action sheets.
Moved by Councilman Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the motion, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Roll call on the ordinance as amended.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 99, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 99, 2017, 2018 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move to amend ordinance number 99 with the following 25 action sheets.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call on the amendment.
On the motion to amend, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman.
I move to amend the agenda to add item 26 action sheet to the Children and Youth Budget.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Leone.
You know, I spoke about this a few times now, and I understand the problems that they have at OCY with the parking, but the parking has been a dilemma for quite a while. A few years ago, we expanded the parking over at OCY, and I believe that expansion lost 20 spaces, if I'm not mistaken, because of the new regulation that they had for the size that they had to have to park the cars. Further from that, I understand also that the union grieved the fact that those particular spots, it's a first-come, first-served idea. And as I said, if you're having problems with some of these people that have children, then they should have the priority to have those particular spots. The other issue with this is I've already talked to Ray Massing, who's the chair of the Parking Authority, and talking to him, he said there are a few places that also do this, but the parking spaces would be $60 apiece. Now, there's many companies that assist in that area, but there are many of them that don't assist. In other words, the employee pays for the total amount of the parking. I believe National Fuel Gas helps in one respect. I believe they pay for half, and the employee pays the other half. And again, I also feel that in this particular case, it's just going to open a Pandora's box. This isn't the only place where you're going to need parking. You need parking here at the courthouse just as much as you need it over there at OCY. And it's unfortunate, but I just won't vote for this because of that reason. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Just to echo Mr. Leone's comments, I mean no disrespect to anyone, but you know, we have upwards of 800 county employees who are part of the bargaining unit, in addition to the other 400 and some non-bargaining. And again, we probably have over 400 people who work in this building who have to pay for their own parking. You know, from that standpoint, I guess in good conscience, I don't know how we approve it for some and not approve it for others. Maybe it's something that the unions look at next year as a tool, as part of their negotiations moving forward. Maybe it's something that the unions look at next year, is, is a tool, as part of their negotiations moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussions?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman.
This is not a fringe benefit. This is a way that we can look after the least of our community. And the fact that Office of Children and Youth is getting an increased number of cases that need to be addressed in a very, very fast, uh, fashion, in order to make sure these individuals are protected. We need to make sure that our caseworkers can increase the number of visits a month, as well as, um, get to those visits quickly. I personally was in a situation where I had already, um, addressed a need based upon neglect for a family. And when I arrived at the home, saw that there was a more urgent need. That intake call was made, and someone, uh, the caseworker was dispatched quickly, and, um, a life was saved. So, um, this is not about a fringe benefit. This is about a way that we can more productively serve the community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? I'll just add that I apologize that I did not approve of this in previous, in a previous year. Um, I think that is correct. Councilman Leone is absolutely correct that, uh, parking needs to be addressed at the courthouse, and I hope the, um, next, uh, this, this administration, the next council will, uh, take measures to address that. We already have, uh, county employees who are not receiving, uh, who are receiving parking, um, uh, and so we already had this unfair, so I think we should, uh, work to, uh, address that, that shortfall. And also, uh, I would like to mention that, you know, all of council here, we have free parking around the courthouse. We're only here for whenever we feel like it. But, um, I, I think it's only fair for those caseworkers, um, particularly those that are, uh, carrying, uh, young ones back and forth, and particularly in the, in the weather. And so, uh, that's why I'll, uh, personally will approve it. But, uh, seeing as no other comments, uh, we'll move on to, um, uh, roll call on the, uh, action sheet twenty-six, the amendment. Mr. Smith.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
No.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
No.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Mr. Maloney, you have, uh, updated numbers for the, uh, cover sheet?
Cover sheet will be seventy-one million, seven hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars.
Would you repeat that, please?
Seventy-one million, seven hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
I'm, uh, I move to amend the, uh, coverage sheet, uh, to the figure that was just provided by, uh, Mr. Malone.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Roll call on the ordinance as amended.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number one hundred, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Domestic Relations Fund Budget.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Faust.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
I move to amend ordinance number one hundred with the following three action sheets.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Maloney, would you provide us with the updated numbers for the cover sheet?
Five million, two hundred twelve thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
I move to amend, uh, uh, to the figure that was just provided by Mr. Malone.
Moved by, moved by Councilman Horton.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the motion, Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Roll call on the ordinance as amended.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance one zero-two, entitled only.
One hundred one, is that what?
I'm sorry. I am, I stand corrected. Ordinance number one oh one, entitled only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred one, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Planning Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
I move that we amend the, I move that we amend the ordinance, uh, ordinance number one hundred one with the following action sheet.
Moved by Councilman Horton and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the amendment, Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Uh, roll call on the ordinance as amended.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance one zero-two, entitled only.
Second reading of ordinance number one hundred two, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Library Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we amend ordinance number one hundred two, uh, with the following four action sheets.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Mr. Maloney, you have updated numbers for the cover sheet.
Six million, eight hundred two thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the cover sheet to reflect the figure provided by Mr. Malone.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Roll call as amended.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Uh, second reading of ordinance number one zero-three, entitled only.
Second reading of ordinance number one hundred three, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Public Health Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
I move to amend ordinance number one hundred three with the following four action sheets.
Five sheets.
Five sheets.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call on the motion.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Updated numbers, Mr. Maloney?
Six million, six hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the cover sheet to reflect the figure provided by, uh, Mr. Malone.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the motion, Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Roll call on ordinance number one zero-three as amended.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number one zero-four, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred four, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Public Safety Fund Budget.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move to amend ordinance number one hundred and four with the following four action sheets.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Mr. Maloney, the updated numbers for the cover sheet, please.
Seven million, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the cover sheet to reflect the figure provided by Mr. Malone.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Roll call as amended.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number one zero-five, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred five, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Gaming Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Mr. Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move to amend ordinance number one hundred and five, uh, uh, with the following seven action sheets.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, I, I think council is, is taking a really important, uh, step here tonight by, essentially, and we'll do it later on and finish it in the general fund, but moving these gaming dollars that we've funded different agencies in the past back to the general fund. That was, I think, not wisely done a few years ago, uh, although we were maybe a little bit harder financial straits at the time. I think the gaming fund dollars really all along have been meant, and we've hoped to fund more transformational type projects. And my only hope is that in the future, we spend, uh, those gaming dollars on those types of projects. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Roll call.
On the motion, Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Mr. Maloney, the updated numbers for the cover sheet, please.
Ten million, six hundred and seven thousand, forty-three dollars.
Mr. Chair, move to amend the cover sheet to reflect the figure provided by.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the amendment, Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Roll call as amended.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number one zero-six, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred six, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Liquid Fuel Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Mr. Leone. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number one zero-seven, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred seven, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Pleasant Ridge Manor Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Mr. Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, move to amend, uh, the ord- ordinance number one hundred and seven, uh, with the following two action sheets.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the motion, Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Maloney, the numbers, uh, for the cover sheet.
Thirty-one million, one thousand, one hundred seventy-one dollars.
Mr. Chair, move to amend, uh, the cover sheet to reflect the figure, uh, just stated by Mr. Malone.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Roll call as amended.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number one zero-eight, entitled only.
The second reading of ordinance number one hundred eight, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Pleasant Ridge Manor Depreciation Reserve Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilman Leone. Any discussion? Roll call.
On ordinance one hundred eight, Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number one zero-nine, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred nine, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Erie County Care Management Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Mr. Leone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, move to amend ordinance number one hundred and eight.
Is it one zero-nine?
Is it one?
One oh nine.
One oh nine.
Oh, it's one oh nine. One oh nine with the following two action sheets.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the motion, Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Leone.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman.
Yes. Roll call as amended, please.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 110, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 110, 2017, 2018 General Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, and seconded by Councilman Leon. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, move to amend ordinance number 110 and the 21 action sheets.
For action sheets 1 through 21, moved by Councilman Horton.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call on the motion.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, move to amend ordinance number 110 with action sheet number 23. I mean, it's 22.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On action sheet 22, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, move to amend ordinance number 110 with action sheet number 23.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On action sheet 23, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Action, Mr. Chair, move to amend ordinance number 110 with action sheet number 25.
24.
24.
Moved by Councilman Horton.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Hold on a second, Mr. Chair.
No problem.
I like to, I got my numbers mixed up.
Okay.
I voted, my last vote was to reflect item number, I thought I was voting on something else. And I'd like to, my vote for item number 23, or action sheet number 23, for the chair, I'd like that to reflect a yes vote.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chair, move to amend ordinance number 110 to action sheet number 24.
Could I suggest, I think 24 through 27, we're pretty unanimous on if we could amend, take all those in one vote to save a little bit of time, without objection anyway?
I have no objection to that.
Moved by Councilman Horton, and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call for action sheets 24 through 27.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, move to amend ordinance number 110 for action sheet number 28.
Moved by Councilman Horton.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On action sheet 28, Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, move to amend ordinance number 110, action sheet 29.
It's a small point, but Freedom is misspelled in this action sheet. If you could include that in your motion, Mr. Horton, then I'll second it.
Yep.
Second.
Move to amend action sheet number 24 with the proper spelling of Freedom House.
For action sheet 29.
Moved by Councilman Horton, and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
On action sheet 29, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Move to amend ordinance number 110 to action sheet number 30.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. DiMatteo?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, move to amend action sheet, I mean, ordinance 110, action sheet number 31.
Moved by Councilman Horton. Do I have a second? Last chance. Is there a second for item 31?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Law. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Faust.
I have a lot of respect for the people that brought this action sheet forward, and for the goals that it might accomplish if it passes. But this is $5,000 to the most affluent school district in Erie County. And we have had, you look at just the Erie School District alone, with the problems that they've had, we didn't lift a financial finger to help them at all, even after a fire. And I just think, you talk about a Pandora's Box that we've talked about all night, this really is a dangerous move if we do that. And again, I have all the respect in the world for the people that brought it forward, and for the goals that it accomplished, but I cannot support this action sheet.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
On action sheet 31, Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Dr. Faust?
No.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. DiMatteo?
No.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I move to amend ordinance number 110.
What second, Councilman? Mr. Maloney, would you have numbers to add for action sheet number 32?
Well, I can give you the totals, and give you the detail when we get back in the room in there.
Okay.
We have a decrease in expenditures of $108,948, an increase in expenditures of $19,239. Those are all based on the actions that you've taken in the previous budgets that we have approved.
What was the increase again, Joe? I'm sorry.
$19,239. And $108,948.
Do we need an action?
That's the total you're saying, correct?
Yeah.
That's not individual?
Yeah, I'll break them down for you.
Mr. Maloney, before we go on recess, is that, do we need an action on that before we go into recess?
I would, yes, so you know where we're at.
Do you amend it with the numbers that were provided?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we amend the cover sheet with the figures provided by Mr. Malone. Action sheet number 32.
Second.
Second. Moved by Councilman Horton, and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. At this time, council will recess. We'll still be in session, but we're going to recess at this time to review the changes, and then we'll be back after we make the review. We stand back in session. Mr. Maloney, updated numbers for the cover sheet?
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the cover sheet to reflect the figure that Mr. Malone just provided.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Horton, and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Roll call.
Amending the cover sheet, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Roll call on ordinance number 110 as amended.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, could I get that figure from Mr. Maloney one more time? Thank you, sir.
Second reading of ordinance number 111, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 111, 2017, 2018 Real Estate Tax Levy.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Faust, and seconded by Councilman Leon. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Just before we adjourn, this is not obligatory, but we at this time always thank our finance staff and our accountant for all the work that they have done on our behalf. I can speak for the 14 years that I have been here, I can't imagine what it's been like since Fiori's been here, but this is a seamless process, and it's made much easier because of their hard work, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I echo those sentiments, and I've learned so much just in the first term that I've been here. I really believe.
We've got a couple to sign, folks.
Will we adjourn?
We stand adjourned.